One. Welcome to our November thirteenth regular county council meeting. Thank you all for being here. We will start with the land acknowledgements. We acknowledge Athabasca County is located on First Nations Treaty Six and Treaty Eight traditional territory. We respect and honor all First Nations, Métis, and Inuit peoples' connection to these lands, their history, language, and culture. So I guess I had better call the meeting to order at nine thirty. We have the approval of the agenda and are there any additions or deletions? Okay, one change we would like to make if council is willing to do so, to move the closed session items twelve point one through twelve point four to be after four point one, our closed session presentation. That's all right with everyone? Okay. All right, and are there any further changes, additions, or deletions? And if not, I'll go around the room to see who and what councillor would like to add items to the agenda to discuss. The ones that I do know about are two point one, four point one, six point one, seven point two, seven point four, seven point five, eight point one A, eight point two, and of course, all our closed session items twelve point one through twelve point four. Are there any other items councils council would like to discuss? Go ahead, please, councillor Hall.
Seven point three.
Seven point three, and I'm sorry, was there another one? Nope, seven point three. Is there anyone else? All righty, I'll just run through those again. Two point one, four point one, followed by closed session items twelve point one through twelve point four, six point one, seven point two, seven point three, seven point four, seven point five, eight point one A, and eight point two. Do we have a motion to approve? Thank you, councillor Minns would like to approve the agenda as discussed. All those in favor? And are there any opposed? Awesome, thank you, nine and O. With our closed session presentation being at ten thirty, we will move to item six point one, which is on page sixteen of your agenda package. And it is bylaw zero three one twenty twenty five, an amendment to the procedural bylaw. All right. Would you like to go ahead?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of council. This request for decision is before you as a result of the change in your meeting schedule that was previously decided upon by council. So it's just to change four point one A to read. Sorry, four point one A will be amended to read that the second and fourth Tuesday of each month shall be set aside for regular council meetings. Given that council has previously made this decision, we are recommending three readings granted, provided. Pardon me, provided unanimous consent is granted by council. Thank you.
Okay, great, thank you. Is there any discussion I think we should do for, go ahead, please councillor Hall?
Just wondering why we wouldn't use more generic language like council would be direct. Council meeting shall be scheduled as directed by council. Because the next time we change this, we're doing this again, and there's no, the act doesn't require us to name the dates, as far as I can tell, in the act superseding our bylaw. We could make this just simple. Although, before you fall, also, I think no one in memory can remember the last time we changed our council date, so it might be another twenty years before we have to fix this.
Madam Chair, I think we're just trying to reflect the current language in the current procedural bylaw, which is very specific. If council wanted to do that, we'd no objection. We'd just have to go away and change the bylaw. And if, if the, the, the discussion was that it should be as per your suggestion, we could take that away and bring back another bylaw, and it would just be set at each organizational meeting or something to that effect. We were just trying to reflect the flavor of the past procedural bylaw and what council wanted for this term. That's all.
Okay, thank you. Were there any, please go ahead, then, Reeve Minns?
I don't know if I should bring it up now or bring it up in calendars. And I think we had a brief discussion on it. So if we go with the second Thursday, then four days later, all of a sudden, we have a committee of the whole meeting that are coming up. Like, so can administration, can administration handle that, or do it, do it, bring it up now, or, or? That's what I'm wondering is, is, do we change the committee of the whole date too, or, or just leave it status quo? What's administration's thought?
Madam Chair, agenda deadlines for us would be a bit of a challenge. Actually, it's just as big a challenge for council. You have to read the darn agenda. So it's a challenge for us, it's a challenge for you. There's a lot of business to take care of that. It's almost a separate discussion about are we, you know, are we effective with our time during council meetings? And how should we think about council meetings moving forward? And we would suggest just leave it the way it is, or implement the changes that were just discussed. Let our four new members of council see how it is, the workload. And then maybe in the new year, we have a discussion about, okay, let's, let's look at all of our meetings and see if we can be more effective as a, as a governing body.
Okay, perfect. I'm good.
Okay, great, thank you. Is there anyone else? I just have a quick question, being that we're also discussed the August meeting being the third Thursday. Is that something we would just handle through calendars rather than add it to the bylaw? Okay, just wanted to confirm that. Awesome, all right. Is there anybody else? If not, we can go to the giving in the first reading. So is there? Thank you so much, councillor Chamsik would like to go forward, that bylaw zero three one twenty twenty five be given first reading as presented. If everybody's ready for the vote.
I propose an amendment on that to replace line A with the language previously mentioned. Regular council meetings should be scheduled as directed by council.
I'm sorry, I can barely hear you. I'm hearing fans more than your voice. If you could try that.
Regular council meetings shall be scheduled as directed by council.
So shall be scheduled as directed by council. I'm just trying to figure out, so apart from statutory meetings, the regular meetings of council shall be held as follows. And you would like that, under A, the second Tuesday last Thursday of each month shall be set aside for regular council meetings. Where would you like the amendment to be inserted?
So we're talking about bylaw zero three one two zero two five, so replacing A under section one point one of the bylaw on page eighteen with the language previously mentioned.
I'm sorry, I missed the last part, four point one A?
We're, we're not dealing with bylaw zero one seven, we're dealing with bylaw zero three one, which is on page eighteen of your agenda. So under section one point one, where the little brackets say A, deleting the words, "The second and fourth Thursday of each month shall be set aside for council meetings", and replacing them with the words, "Regular council meetings shall be scheduled as directed by council."
All right, so everybody has that, page eighteen, one point one A. Instead of the second and fourth Thursday of each month shall be set aside for regular council meetings, you would like to say shall be scheduled as directed by council. Correct? Okay, I think we had, just writing that down. Administration weigh in, and I tend to agree that the way this is written, zero three one twenty twenty five, it's clear, it's concise, and it explains exactly what it is that we were attempting to do. So I would personally be voting against the amendment. But we'll put the amendment on the floor if there's no further discussion. So on the amendment to change one point one A to read shall be scheduled directed by council. All those in favor? One, two, three, four, and those opposed? One, two, three, four, five, the amendment fails, thank you. If we're ready to go forward, councillor Chamsik has asked that we move that the bylaw zero three one twenty twenty five be given first reading as presented. We're ready for the vote. All those in favor? And opposed? One, two, three, that's six and three. If we go forward to the second, do I have a councillor Stasiak? Stasiak or Stajic? All right, councillor Stasiak would like to move that bylaw zero three one twenty twenty five be given second reading as presented. If we're ready for the vote, all those in favor? And those opposed? Six and three, thank you. Do we have unanimous consent? Do we have a motion to go forward with unanimous consent? Councillor Minns would like to make unanimous consent of all those present for third and final reading. All those in favor? Thank you, and any opposed? Thank you, nine and O. Are we ready for third reading? That bylaw zero three one twenty twenty five be given third and final reading. Councillor Dowlech would like to go forward with that. We're ready for the vote. All those in favor? And those opposed? That's seven and two. Thank you very much. All righty, we are going to move on to item seven point three, the local assessment review board decisions, page. Oh, thank you, I checked the wrong one, appreciate that, thank you, seven point two, pardon me, page twenty one of your agenda package. Development officer authority appointment, please. And I asked actually for this one, just, I think this is fantastic that we appoint Diane Clouchier as development authority officer on behalf of Athabasca County as a recommendation. And my only concern was how old the bylaw was. And so I'm wondering after we, if somebody would like to, of course, to put through the recommended motion, I would like to put a secondary motion that we look at bylaw, that twenty five dash nineteen ninety five. Hey, is there anybody who would like to put forward that? Councillor Chamsik would like to go forward to appoint Diane Clouchier as development authority officer on behalf of Athabasca County. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Are there any opposed? Thank you, nine and O. And if I may put a motion forward to direct administration to update bylaw two five nineteen ninety five for councillors to review at an upcoming meeting. Go ahead.
Because I have a concern with this. This is like tag teaming something on that's not related to the agenda item. If we want to talk about amending the bylaw, it should come in as an RFD, where it can be presented to council in advance for consideration. And so that we can even talk to admin about where does this fit in the schedule? Is this really a priority? Does it actually need an update? Admin has not brought that to us, so I just, I don't think this is the right way for stuff to show up on the agenda where it just gets tagged on at the last minute when we haven't had a chance to think about it through an RFD. This would be easy enough to put on as an RFD for the next time, for why, why there's an argument to update the bylaw? We don't need to update stuff just because it's got a nineteen ninety five date.
Well, I appreciate your comments, and I will respond that the bylaw is in the agenda for everyone to have a look at. It is part of the report, and the fact that it is a nineteen ninety five agenda, and we should be looking at our bylaws and policies every four years to update and ensure that they are with the proper language. And as you note on page twenty three in the bylaw itself, it mentions the municipal government act as being nineteen ninety four. So it's just simple language that needs to be updated to bring it to current legislation.
Okay, but we haven't asked admin if it needs to be updated, and the motion is to direct them to update it.
It's for review, to update and review, and I'm pretty sure once administration would go through and have a look at it, they would also agree that there is some old language in here and old act references that would probably require updating as well, but that's up to administration, which is why it's, if you would like to, you know, look at the motion and ask administration to review the bylaw and update as they see fit, that's fine too. But it is an old bylaw that does require some legislation change, update. Go ahead, please.
Just hearing both sides, I guess that the thing that just sticks out for me is, is especially for, I would say, our fresh council members, is the RFD process specific to all requests for, for bylaws or decisions, or is it just like for when we feel like using it or not? Because I myself am confused when we need an RFD or not there.
Well, and if I understand the procedure of bylaw correctly, as it sits, it's councillors can use the RFD if they wish to bring something forward to council. It doesn't say it's specific. It doesn't say it's necessary, it has to be used. It doesn't say it has to happen. We have had motions brought forward before when we have different reports and things that allow for that to take place.
I'll just follow up and say thank you, I appreciate that, because that does take a lot of extra work off our plate. We can just bring our motions when we want to, thank you.
You're welcome. As they make sense, right? All right. So is there anybody who would like to put that motion forward to direct administration to update bylaw twenty five nineteen ninety five for council's review? Or would you like? Sure, I don't mind doing it, I'm just looking, looking to see if the language is, is appropriate for the motion that council's comfortable with. Okay, thank you councillor Stasiak. Would like to direct administration to update bylaw twenty five nineteen ninety five for councillors' review. If we're ready for the vote.
I'd like a recorded.
Pardon me?
Recorded vote, please.
Okay, and we've been asked to do a recorded vote. If we're ready for that, they'll ask that everyone hold their hands up a little longer so that I can make sure I get everybody's names out. All those in favor? We have councillor Dowlech, councillor Chisen, councillor Chamsik, councillor Callahoo, councillor Stasiak, deputy Reeve Minns, Reeve Holland in favor. All those opposed? We have councillor Capitanek and councillor Hall, seven two. Motion passes. Thank you. All righty, I think now we're on seven point three, which is the local assessment review board decisions. Page twenty six of your agenda package. The recommendation here is that county council receive the port from formation. Councillor Hall, I believe you asked for this item to be discussed.
The question I had was, does admin have any comment on the decisions? And whether any of these constitute a precedent that should concern us, or would represent an error in law that we would want to consider appealing? Specifically, there's, there's a decision in that that relates to chattel items and things on skids being excluded, which I think is a change in course from past assessments.
Madam Chair, we didn't review them in that context. If council wants us to, then we, we could. They're provided for info, just like the past motion of council has asked us to do. I think one thing I would note is it's, it's good to note that the appeal process, if you're an affected landowner, is not a rubber stamp. The appeal board actually listens to people, and they've made a number of changes. So when we encourage people to appeal their assessment because they're unhappy with it, it's not a lost cause. They actually, there's some hope that the appeal body would listen to them. So that's encouraging, I think, if you're a landowner.
Absolutely. Thank you very much, I appreciate that. Is there any further discussion on this item?
Well, then I would make a motion to ask administration to consult with the assessor on whether any of these warrant appeal.
Ask administration.
To direct administration to consult with the assessor to determine whether any of the decisions in this package warrant appeal. And it may be that none do, and the only reason you can appeal is, I understand, if there's an error in law, but it's worth I think we need to ask that question.
Did everybody get that? And I'll ask Ms Blair if she could read it back, please.
To direct administration to consult with the county assessor on whether they believe any of the decisions warrant appeal.
Warrant the appeal.
And as context, we had some in the past, four years ago, where the assessment board made errors of law that created a precedent that would have been extremely detrimental to the tax rule. And that one went back and forth a couple of times on appeal because the board made, made an error in law. So you can't appeal because you don't like the outcome, it's, did they make, did they follow the act? And I think it would serve us well to have our assessor provide us that advice after the decision is done.
Thank you. I have one question of administration with regards to appeals. Is it not up to the landowner who put in, who took place, took part, pardon me, in the appeal process of it already? Did they have them to come back and say, I don't agree with that particular outcome?
I there's, after the LPRT decision, either the landowner or the county could appeal that decision if we were unhappy with it to the courts. And the courts would review it and make a decision whether or not it should be referred back to the LPRT for more review or substitute a ruling. So if that, I understand that's the intent of the motion is if any of the ones where the LPRT maybe didn't disagree, didn't agree with the assessor, does the assessor think we should be appealing any of those to the courts? That's my understanding. It has nothing to do with the landowner. And I could be wrong.
And the LPRT is different than the LARB?
I'm sorry, LARB.
Thank you.
In this case, it's LARB, and so it's the decision of the LARB, and so I'm deducing that the motion was for any that might have changed the assessor's recommendation, are we, does the assessor feel that a legal challenge is necessary? And I stand to be corrected.
No, I think, I think it serves us to ask that question. We don't, can't just accept it. We know that these are flawed, can have flaws and errors, and, and when there's been a change in assessment, it's it's almost no, no time at all to reach out to the assessor and say, is there any of these that warrant appeal? Because again, we have had some in the past where assessment review boards have made errors in their interpretation of the law, and I haven't gone through them at the level of detail where I have an opinion on it. That's the assessor's job, is they're the experts.
Okay, thank you. Just one more question, is this standard practice across other municipalities? To do this type of motion as well to ask for this, this the assessor?
Oh, I don't know about that, whether it's standard, I mean, it came up, I believe, in the previous term of council that council had specific concerns about how appeals were handled in the past, and you did appeal something to the courts, and it was returned for further review. So checking in with the assessor, are there any that concern you is, is a simple email, and it'll take an email response back.
Thank you. All right, is there any other further conversation on this? Please go ahead, you're okay? All right, so if I understand it correctly, councillor Hall would like to move to direct administration to consult with the county assessor whether or not any decisions warrant an appeal. Is that accurate?
The motion on the floor is to direct administration to reach out to the assessor and determine, ask his opinion on whether any assessments are warranted in the way that Ms Blair has it written down.
Do you have that same wording? Or would you like to read it out so everyone understands exactly what it says? Jason, thank you.
Move by councillor Hall to direct administration to consult with the county assessor to determine if any of those, these decisions warrant an appeal.
Satisfactory, councillor Hall. Okay, there's no further discussion. Are we ready for the vote? All those in favor? One, two, three, and those opposed? One, two, three, four, five, six, that's six and three, motion fails. Six, I guess. Thank you. All right, the next item we have are public auction reserve bids, page eighty four of your agenda package. And this one is that council, the recommendation here from administration is that council set the reserve bids as recommended and adopt the recommended conditions of sale. Director Daly, would you like to weigh in?
That's correct, Reeve Allen, and I think previously the auction date came to council, and that was set for November twenty eighth. So this is just a process of setting the reserve bids, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there any discussion on this item? I just had a quick question, just the third item. I know the part southwest thirty one sixty four twenty two west of the fourth is in Menook, it's a one acre parcel, but I wasn't exactly sure where it was to kind of look at what's around it, just to feel comfortable, the reserve bid. I didn't know where it was located. I could locate all the other ones, but I couldn't locate that one.
Why does it not come up with a roll number on the map?
Sorry?
Does the roll number not bring it up on the GIS map?
Well, when I looked it up, it's part southwest, but it's a one acre parcel, so.
Every parcel has a separate roll number, though. The roll number is on there.
Okay, I'll double check and look at that then another time, because I couldn't find it, but went through the GIS on that one.
Reeve Allen, I do believe that, that is a parcel that may be kind of a small parcel that's kind of surrounded by other parcels. It's a part of a, there is a, there is a piece of parcel, and then this is kind of connected, but it's kind of surrounded. I could be wrong on that, but I do believe that's what this parcel is.
And it's vacant land?
Uh, yeah.
Okay.
That, this particular piece, there's another parcel next to it, which is not vacant.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that. All right, does anybody else have any other questions? Does anybody like to put the motion forward? Councillor Callahoo would like to move that council set the reserve bids as recommended and adopt the recommended conditions of sale. We're ready for the vote, all those in favor? Are there any opposed? Nine and O, thank you. All righty, getting to the meat of the meeting, the twenty twenty six draft operating and capital budgets, which is on page eighty nine of your agenda package. I will turn this over, I'll just mention the recommendation, of course, is that council reviews the twenty six to twenty, twenty twenty six to twenty thirty operating and capital budgets, and recommends changes for further deliberations at the December eleventh twenty twenty five council meeting. And I will turn the floor over to administration, please go ahead.
Thank you, Reeve Allen. Good day councillors, Reeve Allen, deputy Reeve. So the presentation may be something that a few of you already seen, but for the benefit of the new councillors, I'm going to go through the presentation again first, and then we can get right into the detail of the budget. Thank you. So we'll be looking at the proposed twenty twenty six operating and capital budget. So when we look at our developing the budget, we look at basically strategic pillars, strategic priorities of of council and what they're looking at going forward. So basically, for twenty twenty six, the strategic plan pillars, number one was strengthening, strengthening our economy. So basically, keeping Athabasca County vibrant and economically sustainable is fundamental to maintaining a strong community now and well into the future. Second one, investing in infrastructure and our environment. So basically, county assets are the property, county assets are properly, looking at county, that county assets are properly maintained and repaired or replaced if necessary. So basically county assets are the property, county assets are properly looking at county, that county assets are properly maintained and repaired or replaced if necessary. Uh, a community that cares, we, we, we continue to focus on the people who contribute to our tremendous quality of life. And then effective leadership and organizational excellence. Our organization has the expertise to serve the county well, and we continually strive for excellence, responsive communication. And strong fiscal, fiscal accountability. So the budget planning process, basically, we look at, this is just a snapshot about, now I guess we developed the budget. We review. Base budget and actuals, the start of it. Then we consider revenue and expenditure assumptions. Uh, previously we did a budget survey, which was presented, I guess, at the first October sixth council meeting. We adjust budget based on trends. Then there's a proposed operating and capital announcements, and then balance budget based on priorities of council. Uh, so this slide is just a cut, kind of a snapshot, the county snapshot. It shows the population. Uh, just under seven thousand, average household prices, three hundred and eighty-five thousand. Uh, total labor force roughly thirty-six hundred people and our primary industries are oil and gas and agriculture. And then the circle just kind of shows a few stats on medium income also, medium age, et cetera. So for twenty twenty-six, our budget assumptions, property tax revenues, annual tax revenue is projected to increase by approximately three percent each year. However, collecting tax revenue from some producers in the oil sector is a challenge as, as a large sum continues to be unpaid. Uh, growth, Athabasca County continues to experience growth in terms of subdivision and development applications. For grant funding, Canada Community Billing Fund, C C B F is expected to remain at the twenty twenty-five level of four hundred and seventy-two thousand, six hundred and sixty-six. This is funding basically that comes from the feds, but it's distributed to the government of Alberta. Uh, local government fiscal framework, uh, this is government of Alberta, capital funding is expected to decrease from one million nine hundred and forty-six. Thousand in twenty twenty-five to roughly one, one million, seven hundred and eighty-six thousand in twenty twenty-six. L G F, L G F F operating funding is assumed to remain the same at three hundred and forty-four thousand for twenty twenty-six. Uh, the consumer price index, the twenty twenty-six budget predicts sustained but moderate inflation. Particularly in areas sensitive to price changes such as construction costs, fuel. Food and fleet related parts and supplies. Trade tension is expected to still be an impact in twenty twenty-six. And we've already seen this with the. Government of Canada, I guess, I mean, just recently lowered their interest rates again. So I mean, it's going to have an impact on everything basically. Um, salaries and wages, salaries, wages and benefits, the twenty twenty-six budget considers annual salary increments and benefits. Cost of living allowance, COLA, as per policy forty-six sixty-five, an annual review will be completed using a combination of factors. Including the Alberta Consumer Price Index information. And a recommendation to council in the annual budget process, a cost of living allowance of two percent increase is being proposed in this twenty twenty-six budget. Assessment, over the past five years, the assessment growth has shown an average annual increase of three percent. While it is too soon to confirm this year's assessment values, we expect a continued upward trend. The proposed budget anticipates a three percent increase. Uh, with the new council, the proposed budget builds off priorities of the previous council. So this current council. You may have new priorities which may affect the proposed task budget. So if there's something different priority wise, this budget will change based on that. Twenty twenty-six budget highlights, uh, this budget includes paid-on call firefighters. Fire fleet replacement, bridge replacement rehabilitations. Park upgrades and playground rehabilitation, plow truck, a greater replacement program. Enterprise resource planning, uh, new software system. Recreation plan phase one. The island lake water line. Uh, gravel road maintenance increased to level of service. Public workshop construction and the Alpac Bridge. So this slide just kind of shows our taxation and assessment, assessment by classification. As you can see on the slide, uh, our biggest classification of assessment is residential at forty-seven percent. The next, uh, the second biggest, I guess, is linear twenty-six percent. Then we have machinery equipment seventeen percent, non-residential and farmland. So that was assessed assessment by classification. And then this next slide is just a revenue. So as expected, residential is fifty-one percent and then linear twenty-four percent and so on, sixteen percent. Machinery equipment, seven percent, non-residential and two percent farm, farm land. Any questions so far?
So I believe the last time you talked to us about this, we talked about an annual tax revenue increase closer to five percent. And an assessment increase of three percent, meaning three percent assessment growth, two percent tax rate, tax rate increase. And the revenue line on the budget looks like it is more aligned with the five percent. So I'm just wondering, has that changed since our last discussion?
Uh, through Reeve, uh, Councilor, no, that's correct. Uh, revenue line is basically five percent. It's a two percent. Proposed tax increase and a three, and then the three percent is based on what we expect for assessment. So it would equal a total of five percent, as you mentioned.
So my misunderstanding then page ninety-five, where it says annual tax revenue is proposed to increase by three percent?
The three percent is what we expect from growth in terms of, uh. Like assessment growth. But then in order to balance the budget, there was also a two percent added. So it's technically, I guess, five percent. Three plus two.
Go ahead, please, Councilor Dalek, thank you.
Yeah, on your twenty, twenty-six budget highlights. I don't like it. Well, I like it, but I don't like the fact that the, we're, we're not looking at any major road construction. Uh, that we should be putting some money away or, or trying to find someone. Uh, it's got road maintenance, of course, but. Uh, I don't know if it's a proper time to bring up hard talk now or not. Wonder if you can, they'll be involved.
Uh, Madam Chair, councillors are free to pipe in whenever they want, especially, you know, uh, we've got four new members of council. And they didn't see the first draft, so they didn't get any input into what is here today. It's up to the chair. We, we welcome all comments. So it doesn't matter where you raise them. There's, it's also mentioned later, so you could talk about it now or you could talk about it later.
Well, if it's mentioned later, I'm just gonna, I'll talk about it later.
All right. Is there any other, any other questions? Okay, thank you so much. Please go ahead.
Uh, so continuing on, uh, what the twenty twenty-six taxes fund. So basically, uh, based on this graph, you can see the largest, um. Largest area where our taxes fund would be infrastructure and transportation at fifty percent. Then administration thirteen percent, and then so on going down agriculture services, four percent. Uh, fire protection, ten percent. Uh, and then I guess recreation eight percent and water and wastewater five percent. And then we have a. Report at two, two percent, one percent, three percent. But this kind of gives you a snapshot where the bulk of the money, like the taxes go. And then as you can see, uh. Infrastructure and transportation, you mean, which could possibly in roads, road maintenance, et cetera, bridges. Uh, do take up a rather substantial amount of the tax.
Councilor Hall.
So on the graph, what the taxes fund, are the reserve contributions baked into each category or are they excluded altogether?
It would be total. It would be so if, if there is a reserve transfer, it would be included.
So, and, and I ask because we have other specific reserve contributions that council has asked to be made that I think. Um, it's important when we're, you know, putting something like this out. For people to see that we, there's a little wedge that says capital reserve savings for. Gravel pit, reserve, reclamation, fire truck. I guess the fire fleet replacement will be in there already, but. I guess I, but.
Uh, through, uh, through the, there were, there will also be, uh, I guess a couple of slides here on reserves, which you mean. This is the current reserve policy. You mean, I know that reserve policy is coming back, uh, for a final. Uh, decision. So once that reserve comes back, I mean, those reserves and where they are and where they're distributed could, uh, could potentially change or new reserves could be potentially made. But I do, uh, we do talk about a little bit about reserves in this, uh, presentation. Not sure if that answers your question.
Thank you. Okay. I don't think there's any other questions. Please go ahead. Thank you.
So I guess next slide, reserves. Reserves play a crucial role in ensuring the stability and sustainability of a municipality's long-term financial plan. Uh, reserves serve to do the following, facilitate effective asset management planning. To support long-term maintenance, repair and or repairment, retirement, sorry, of infrastructure assets. Ensuring the maintenance of adequate service levels. It enables the county to strategically plan to future, for future operating and capital needs, thereby. Reducing reliance on long-term borrowing and it stabilizes tax rates. So I guess example of that, I mean, if we are showing if we, when we go through the budget with our revenues and if there is a deficit or whatever. We usually do a transfer from reserves to balance the budget because we can't have a deficit budget. So I will say this is our operating reserves and these numbers are as of August thirty-first. And as I mentioned with the. When the reserve policy comes back, some of these categories will, will probably change slightly. So this is, uh. You can see the total operating reserve on this slide is eleven million, three hundred, basically three hundred and twenty-three, uh, million. I mean, eleven million, three hundred and twenty-three thousand. And that's broken down between equipment, public transportation, waste management, pardon me, general operating. F C S S operating fire and recreation. And then the capital and the total reserve. So capital reserves is, uh, there's a reserve for general capital. We have fire trucks and equipment. Uh, bait, uh, equipment, roads, water, equipment and lines, sewer equipment lines and airport upgrades. Uh, recreation, there's a reserve for amortization fund, total capital is just under ten million. So a balance of our reserves is twenty-one million, two hundred and fifty, with a budgeted surplus. Twenty-seven thousand, so twenty, twenty-one million, two hundred and seventy-seven thousand. What we're expecting for twenty twenty-five.
Councilor Hall.
So again, on the gravel pit, reclamation reserve, can you just clarify for all of us where, where that shows up in here? Because that, that was a motion of council, I'm fairly sure. Is it in one of these categories? For reference, I believe we seeded with a million dollars and then we're contributing four hundred and ten thousand dollars a year annually afterward.
He's in, I think it's in the roads. Uh, Reeve Allen through, uh, Councilor Hall. Uh, you will see this in the common services budget once we go through, uh. Line item, it'll be a line item twenty-seven sixty transferred to reserves. But in this particular reserves, I think it's under road, but we will confirm that.
Yeah, I'm sure we'll just look into it and get back to you.
Thank you very much. Council Stacey has a question.
I just need some clarification here. The, these reserves, I'm assuming that this is money set aside in case we need it. This is not our operating budget. Is that correct?
Uh, that's correct. This is actually, uh, these reserves are money set aside for these particular, uh, items. Uh. It's a separate, uh, account. Now, I mean, we have one general bank account with a couple of separate like trust accounts, et cetera. So our reserves are like kind of restricted. We set them aside and this money is used for that particular, uh, purpose of what the reserve is.
If needed.
If needed, correct.
Okay. And so how do they get replenished?
Yeah, Madam Chair, um, reserves can be set aside for many different reasons. If needed, so, um, you know, something happens, we need a contingency. Specific planning, you can set aside to save for something. Uh, you can set aside reserves that acts as your own bank account to level out purchases. For example. Um, the equipment reserve is set aside and you keep a certain amount in there. And what it does is level out the purchase price from year to year, especially for. Uh, ones that we have a twenty-year plan on. So we've got one, a twenty-year plan for fire trucks, fire apparatus. Um, instead of having taxes raised some year to accommodate for it, you set aside a reserve and then you can keep that number. So reserves can be set up to accommodate a number of different purposes. Uh, there's probably five or six different purposes. So, um, when we, we can certainly send you. The last reserve discussion item that we sent to council and it talks about those, those purposes.
And so then, do we normally just keep replenishing this as a percentage of our general revenue or just as we think we need it eventually?
Well, um. Madam Chair, um, the previous council noted that the reserves itself needs a lot of work. Um, the reserve, the, the actual accounts, like there's some there that. Make no sense, but they're, they're, they weren't really the work of the previous council or a previous admin, administration. There's one called amortization fund that none of us know what was for, uh, but it's there. So we're going to bring ahead a, a discussion item to council with. Uh, and it's pretty much done. Uh, Director Ampley has been working on it for about four months. Uh, with specific targets and specific purposes, and we'll have it for you early in the new year.
Yeah, essentially what my concern was is trying to understand. How these funds are put in place and do we increase them every year to get up to speed where we should be with them? Or do we just let them sit as they are thinking they're okay or?
Yeah, uh, and that'll take, uh, we've got an item ready to go and some of them we find are, are actually probably funded already. They're, and we can focus on other ones, but we've, we've tried to establish what target should be, given what you want to achieve in the future. Some of it's guesswork because we don't have full asset management planning here. Like we don't have a ten-year road plan. So we've picked figures to set as a target. Um, but some of them you'll find when we bring the item back, they're already funded. So we're good and we can focus on other areas and it's really been council driving this at each budget process saying. Uh, we think we need to fund this a little bit more. And so we've been responding, but. Uh, previous council also knew that we would work on a whole new policy and we've got it ready to go.
Thank you. Appreciate.
Councilor Dalek?
So, just going back, they said, so is the contingency already included in the. In the, in the capital, say like a community services or whatever, it's fifty thousand dollars. Is there a contingency? Tendency built into that or?
Well, are you talking about, um, Madam Chair, going to redirect with a question, are you talking about each capital project?
Yeah.
Okay, most capital projects contingency is built into the, the, the budget established for that project.
Yeah, that's.
So you build it in there. It's not really, uh, reserves, uh, but reserves are there in case, uh. Uh, maybe we don't have money in the budget and if we had a capital project that we had to come back to council and say. Look, this thing, uh, looks like it's going to go over, uh, and we didn't budget for it and we need to resource, uh, of funds, we could use reserves. But most capital projects have contingency built into the budget.
Okay, yeah, that's fine. So we haven't got an item saying contingency.
No, but there's a couple of accounts you can use for contingency almost any time.
I've observed.
Almost like a, call it a rainy day fund or a just in case fund. There's a, there's a bit of that in the, and there will be that going forward.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Alrighty, thank you. Please go ahead.
Um, so. Continuing twenty, so in twenty twenty-five, we have some projects that it's not. continuing twenty, so in twenty twenty five, we have some projects that's not going to be completed. So twenty twenty five carry forward projects, um, and these are majority are, uh, uh, capital projects. So we have infrastructure under infrastructure services, island lake water line fifteen point six million. Uh, infrastructure services, Alpac Bridge, uh, one point eight million. So the total, uh, cost of this bridge was one point nine million. Um, and basically we expect to spend a hundred thousand in twenty twenty five and then, um, we're going to carry remainder, remainder, uh, forward in twenty twenty six. Now that a hundred thousand may be a little lower, so whatever the difference is, I mean, it could be say one point eight five rather than one point eight, depending if we do spend the full hundred or say fifty thousand or twenty five thousand of it in twenty twenty five. But the total project initially was one point nine million. That's why uh, there was originally a question that why is it one point nine, but it's showing one point eight? That's because we expect to spend a hundred thousand in twenty twenty five. Um, fire protection fleet replacement, six hundred and ninety thousand. Community and protective services of Boyle, I D P fifty thousand. Uh, security camera and yard lighting, thirty six thousand. And then l- laser level attachment transit for excavator ninety five hundred.
Councillor Dalek.
Just a quick question. Pay the island lake, uh, water, water line fifteen million. Uh, what happens with the interest? Is that just going to our revenue or does that number increase?
Uh, with that, with that, that's a grant from the government. So with that, in most cases, they don't pay us the money upfront. We have to submit reports and once we submit, uh, progress reports, they would, uh, they would pay us money. So, um, few years ago, the government used to give you, uh, grant money upfront and like the municipalities could gain interest on it. But probably I'd say maybe three years ago or so, they didn't start paying until like, and I'm mostly referring to like the C C B F and the L G F F used to be O M S I. They don't give the money until the end of the year when we report that the project is completed. Uh, so they actually keep the money and they get the interest.
Okay, thanks.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Uh, so moving forward to the twenty twenty six proposed capital projects, um, first one we have is under administration, um, enterprise resource planning, software system, uh, five hundred thousand. So this basically, uh, currently we're on, um, Microsoft Dynamics. Some people may know it as Great Plains. Uh, this system is nearing the end of its useful life. Um, twenty twenty eight basically expected not to be supported, possibly usable in twenty twenty nine, but at the end of twenty twenty eight, it's no longer going to be supported. Um, we already see, for example, municipalities going forward, uh, changing systems. So now, um, this is why you're seeing this, uh, in this budget for, uh, so basically a new financial system. Uh, infrastructure services, billing maintenance based upon billing condition assessment, uh, five hundred thousand. And the U P S upgrade administrate administration ease trough system, administration billing, H VAC study. Council chambers windows are just some of the projects that will be covered. Uh, infrastructure services, shoulder pose, four hundred and fifty thousand. Uh, power protection, highway sixty three rescue base teen center renovation, two hundred and twenty five thousand. Uh, infrastructure services, public works yard and facilities, fifteen million. Infrastructure services, bridge replacement, one point nine five million. And this is in addition to the Alpac Bridge. Infrastructure Services Asphalt Overlay Annual Program, one point five two six million. Greater Replacement Program, one point five million. Uh, plow truck, three hundred and fifty thousand. Uh, skid steer, two hundred and thirty five thousand. A lift station electrical upgrade, two hundred thousand.
So sorry councillor Dalek, thank you.
Okay, uh, just a quick question. How do we come up with two hundred and thirty five thousand for a skid steer?
It's a, sorry.
It's the, uh, quotes that we looked at for the, the large skid steer. So it, it's a, it's a big skid steer. It's pretty much the biggest you can get.
Well, okay. So it's just thought of skid steer. It's a larger piece of, but thank you.
Um, grassland, so continue, oh, there's no question. Uh, so continuing grassland reservoir electrical upgrade, two hundred thousand. Uh, Willow Point access, hundred and eighty five thousand. Out houses, hundred and sixty thousand. Recreation Plan Phase One, hundred thousand. Idrant installations, fifty thousand. I'd just like to say for most of these projects that we, that I'm talking, that I'm listing there, uh, there is business cases and you will see it in the detail of the documents. Uh, in case you're wondering like what some of these projects may be. Um.
Go ahead councillor Capitan.
And I, I just want to confirm like some of these things have grants for them as well already, like oh, houses and whatnot. It sounds we not have recreation grants coming. Is that too late last year?
Uh, for some there's grants, but for the, like the main, while we have a grant for Alpac Bridge, for example.
Yeah.
Uh, but some of these, if you mean, if there's most of these right here, uh, that I'm listing, these smaller ones don't have grants, but if there's grant opportunities, we all, we always look for grant opportunities. If there's opportunity come up, while we would apply for a grant, other than the yearly like C C B F kind of community billing fund or the L G F F grants, we mean, which we basically allocate the capital based on, uh, the are based on the criteria that they state for that, those particular grants. But there is like, say, for example, stiff or something like that, we would have to apply specifically uh, for those like the water for life grant, that kind of grant, we would have to apply specifically for those type of grants. So like, yes, the water for life, that is a grant, uh, Alpac Bridge is a grant, but most of these that I'm listing, as you see, when we go through the detail, um, there is not a grant attached to them currently.
Okay. So just to confirm, I just had a recollection of us getting recreation grant funding for outhouses maybe a year or two ago, and it wasn't all of them, but it was like, uh, uh, and red, okay. And so did we utilize that for outhouses?
Yeah, I think we, that was the N red, uh, Northern Regional Economic Development Grant, and I think we've tried to apply it to capital moving forward and the program changed a bit.
Okay.
So they don't want it applied to capital. There's some opportunities there, but, um, unfortunately I don't think these are funded by that.
Oh, thank you for that answer. Just was curious. Thank you.
Councillor Hall.
So we'll, we'll appoint a relatively new subdivision. How, uh, and I, my understanding was that access and road connections are the developer's responsibility. So how did this get dumped on the county where we're, we're paying for Willow Point Access when it should be something that's a developer's responsibility?
The Willow Point subdivision was previously approved. Um, it doesn't meet our current standards. So that's how it's ended up uh, on our list. Uh, but the developer no longer has, uh, any requirements for that because it was signed off on by the municipality.
Thank you. And I don't believe it's fairly new. I believe it's probably thirty years, twenty years now. So it's not, not that new, but thank you for that.
Okay, continuing, um, so I mentioned hydrant installations, fifty thousand. Highway signage, forty thousand. Uh, playgrounds, twenty thousand. Uh, a light equipment mower, eight thousand. So that was our capital. So for, uh, now we'll talk a little bit about, uh, operating changes. So some of these are not necessarily increases, but just, um, movement or transfers, uh, from like one, uh, department to an ex or one division to an ex. So under administration, um, deferred digital, digitalization project was deferred to, uh, twenty twenty seven. So you'll see, uh, basically that was a savings for twenty twenty six of hundred and thirty two thousand. Uh, in administration, H R and safety and also G I S was moved to separate cost centers. Uh, four, four hundred and fifty thou, four hundred and fifty seven thousand, but there was no net budget impact. Uh, under administration, facility costs were moved to facilities, fifty six thousand, also no net budget impact. And community transportation, uh, includes a full-time anti-bus driver and transfer of administrative position, seventy one thousand. In economic development, a net increase due to funding of a lobbyist previously funded by reserves. So now the county will be funding it, funding it directly through taxation, hundred and five thousand. In fire protection, um, there's an increase in unpaid, in paid on call allocations, seasonal fire technician and decreased revenue offset by various reductions in expenses of three hundred and eighty two thousand.
Thank you very much, um, Director. They were getting close to ten thirty, um, for our delegation who will be coming in. So maybe if we could stop here um, and then we'll pick it up as soon as we're done with our enclosed session.
Okay.
One question.
Yes. Oh, yep, we have one question. Sorry, councillor Capitan.
Just a, a question to come back with him, just because you are going through this list. Um, I was interested, um, in finding out what our contract and how long for it is with lobbyists and if we are going to be looking at, uh, at renewing and or other
We could, we could certainly report back on that.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, um, I think maybe we should do, um, a recess if we are, or is our delegation here? They're here. Okay. Um, is it okay then if we ask them for a five minute recess? Yeah. Okay. So we'll do a five minute recess and we come back, we'll be going into closed. Thank you.